This is Vice Mayor John Anderson, and today is July the 15th at 6:00 p.m. And I'm calling the Red Door Town Council meeting to order at this point. Could I ask for a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Hughes.
Here.
Councilwoman Cortez.
Here.
Councilwoman Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Wall.
Here.
Councilman Hawkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson. Mayor Walter? Not present. Vice Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Karen Wall as being interim mayor tonight to run the meeting. Can I get a second for that?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? At this point, I'll turn the meeting over to Councilman Wall.
Thank you, John. We're going to have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item five is our Call to the Public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I have one request to speak at call to the public from Carolyn Renee DeLucio. Thank you.
My name Carolyn Renee DeLucio, 1461 South San Carlos here in Florence. It's about the roundabouts at the where the Y currently is. With the two roundabouts, it's going to be very hard to maneuver through for me to get to my house. I have used roundabouts in other states, and if the other people in the roundabout are not being courteous, you cannot get out of it if you end up in the center lane. I went around one four times before somebody would actually let me back in to get out where I needed to go. So there are so many better options. A stoplight would be a better option because it's straightforward. You're not trying to get somebody to be courteous if they're not a courteous person. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak at call to the public? Closing call to the public. Agenda item six is Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District One. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion. We adjourned Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Ray Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor, interim mayor, vice mayor, and members of council. I'm here tonight to ask for approval of the FY 2019-2020 secondary tax levy increase for CFD Number One. The area in pink is where CFD Number One is located. If anyone on council or members of the public would like to know where their home is located, please give me a call or a member of my staff, and we'll be happy to help you locate where help you locate which district you belong to. State law requires that the town to advertise and adopt the secondary property tax levy in the same way as the primary tax levy. The levy was advertised in the newspaper and town website. Council held a public hearing on July 1st, 2019, which was our last council meeting. The recommended tax rate for FY 1920 will be set at .72 per $100 of net assessed valuation. CFD Number One levy would collect approximately $208,000. 124 approximately 124,000 of that 208 would be used for debt service. The remaining amount will be used for operations and maintenance. This statement depicted here is an example of where your taxes can be found for someone who's living in CFD Number One. So the tax amount that I've highlighted in the red box will show the homeowner where the amount is located on their statement. So if you take the net assessed valuation highlighted in yellow divided by 100, because again, we're saying that is based on $100 of net assessed valuation, times the tax rate, the homeowner last year, according to this statement, the tax amount would have been So this slide here is just a historical view of what the CFD Number One rates have been for the last four or five years. So someone with a $100,000 home, again, if you take that 100,000 divided by the 100 of net assessed valuation, the amount of tax that the homeowner would expect to pay would be about $72. Clarification on the rate for FY 2020, it's .072. 0.72. My apologies on that. Does anyone on council have any questions?
I have to apologize. I didn't read what this agenda item is all about. If you'll bear with me, I'll go ahead and do that. This is an ordinance number FRCFD1-116-19. Discussion approval or disapproval of an ordinance of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the Community Facilities District Number One, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for community facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2020 and declaring an emergency. Do any members of the council have questions?
Is it going up 72 cents? Because it says, if I'm reading this example correctly, it says for fiscal year 2018, it's 355, for fiscal year 2019, 328, and then fiscal year 2020, 72 cents. So which number am I supposed to be looking at, or is it?
The 2020.
So it'll be 72 cents per $100, and right now it's 328 per $100?
Right.
So it's a decrease?
Yes, it's a decrease.
So I don't know if I can ask this question right now, or if I have to wait, but why is CFD One going down to 72 cents and CFD Two is going up?
That is primarily based on the debt service. So in CFD Number One, we have less debt service than we do in CFD Number Two.
Okay. And then what happens, when does this CFD end? Does it ever end?
I guess my answer to that is when we, at least for this, the when we have these hearings and these, we ask for adoption is to pay the debt service. So whenever that debt service is completed, my assumption is that we won't be coming to ask for these rates.
Okay.
So a lot of the times, they're out 20, 25 years, the debt service.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions? With that, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number MRCFD1-116-19.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ma'am, can we get a roll call, Val?
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes?
Aye.
Councilmember, or I'm sorry, board member Hughes. Board Member Cortez?
Aye.
Board Member Larson?
Aye.
Board Member Wall?
Aye.
Board Member Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Madam Mayor?
Aye.
Pro tem?
Aye.
I guess. Motion passes.
Motion carries. Sorry, I'm not used to doing this, guys. I need a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
I make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is an ordinance number FRCFD2-216-19. Discussion approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the Community Facilities District Number Two, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for community facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2020 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Sanchez.
Again, I'm interim mayor, vice mayor, members of council. This, I'm here tonight to ask for approval for the FY 2019-2020 secondary levy increase for CFD Number Two. So the area in yellow is where CFD Number Two is located. So as I previously stated, if anyone on council or anyone in the public wants to know exactly where their home is located, they can just give me a call or a member of my staff, and we'll be able to assist with that. So for CFD Number Two, state law requires that the town to advertise and adopt the secondary property tax in the same way as the primary tax levy. The levy was advertised in newspaper and town website. Council held a public meeting on July 1st, 2019, which was our last council meeting. The recommended tax rate for FY 1920 will be set at 355 per $100 of net assessed valuation. CFD Two levy will collect approximately $763,000. 698,000 of that 763 will be used for debt service. The remaining amount will be used for operations and maintenance. So again, this property tax statement here is just an example of where your taxes can be found for someone living in CFD Number Two. So the previous example was someone living in CFD Number One. Here's CFD Number Two. Again, the tax amount that I highlight in the red box will show the homeowner where the amount is located on your statement. So if you take the net assessed valuation, that's in that yellow box, and you divide that by 100, times the tax rate, you'll come up with that tax amount. So for 2018, the homeowner would have paid $413. So that's the example given here. Again, the historical rate data, this is for CFD Number Two, for a $100,000 home, again, if you divide that by 100 of net assessed valuation, times the proposed tax rate of 355, the amount of tax that the homeowner would pay is approximately $355. Does anyone have any questions regarding CFD Number Two?
Seeing no questions, I need a motion. I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 676-19.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, do we need a roll call? Guess we'd better do a roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Board Member Hughes?
Aye.
Board Member Cortez?
Aye.
Board Member Larson?
Aye.
Board Member Wall?
Aye.
Board Member Hawkins?
Aye.
Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
Ma'am? Motion passes.
We need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10A, public hearing to receive citizen comments on the proposed zone change for APN 202-04-0530 to Highway Business Commercial B2 and first reading of ordinance number 680-19, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the Highway Business Commercial B2 zone change for Assessor Parcel Number Parcel Number 202040530, PLZ-19-19. Mr. Harmer.
Ma'am, please open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You can tell I'm a novice at this. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this item? Any members of the council?
We're just opening the public hearing, and then we'll close it later after his presentation if there's no comments. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. I should have gone to school for this.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Anderson, presiding councilmember Wall, and the rest of the council. This item is a rezoning request for approximately 2.6 acres on south of the intersection of Highway 287 and Highway 79. It's currently zoned, or it's approximately, I'm sorry, 2.09 acres. It's currently zoned R16, residential zone. The request is to go to a business two zone. The parcel, very oddly shaped, to say the least, directly across from the apartments to the east. The city, or the town limit, rather, is at the south end of this property. I should note at this point that the property owners of the parcel in question are the same as the property owners to the parcel attached to the south, which is still in the county. This gives a better depiction of where this is located, Florence Heights Drive and the intersection with South Main and Highway 79, and it comes off with the Canal Road on the back on the west side and Highway 79 on the east. We've done all of the appropriate public outreach, public notice, public hearings with the Planning and Zoning Commission for this parcel. Findings with proposed zoning is consistent with the 2020 general plan, and the rezoning would facilitate commercial development along Highway 79. Some of the samples of types of uses, and this is just a very small sampling, also uses can be requested and interpreted either by community development director or by the planning commission should anything else come up that is not listed currently in the Development Code. The recommendation coming forward is approval. Development should be in conformance with all applicable town codes and ordinances. The property owners agree to waive claimants and authorize the Prop 207, which has already been done in this case, and any additional conditions or stipulations deemed necessary by the town council. Do you have any specific questions?
Seeing none, are there any members of the public who would like to comment? Closing the public hearing. The second reading will take place on August 5th of 2019. Item 10B, public hearing to receive citizens' comments on a request to change setbacks for new units, replacement units, and auxiliary buildings in Caliente del Sol, units 1, 2, 3, and 4, and first reading of ordinance number 681-19, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving certain nonconforming uses of property within units 1, 2, 3, and 4 of Caliente del Sol and declaring an emergency. Opening the public hearing. Mr. Harmer.
Thank you, presiding councilmember. Good evening to Vice Mayor Anderson and the rest of the council. This is one, an item that you all are fairly aware of. We've had numerous meetings at staff level, and then there's a work session with the council with representatives of Caliente del Sol. This is to formalize all those discussions. We've been working directly with them regarding setbacks for new units, replacement units, and we're talking park models when we're talking units. We're not talking about portable RVs such as fifth wheels or motorhomes, and then accessory or auxiliary buildings. Brief, just quickly, is an outline of the area that will be affected. Tierra del Sol is the out parcels up in the northwest, or northeast corner. There were difficulties, as you're all aware, regarding past setbacks and how things were in the building code, it had not been enforced in the past, and some of the discussions that came forward from that. We did have an approval from the Owners Association from Caliente. The proposal, and we do have the building official here and representatives of Caliente del Sol, should you have any detailed questions on these, I'll just give you the general overview. Three primary modifications in looking at the setbacks. One is that propane and gas would be removed from all new and replacement park models. New and replacement units would have an age requirement of no older than five years from date of replacement. All new replaced park model units have carbon monoxide detectors installed. Other details have to do with the setbacks that have all been discussed and agreed upon as far as rear setbacks, front yard, which is the back of sidewalk is where the two-foot line is. The sidewalk itself is on the private property. And then the other details related to the age, propane, et cetera. We have met with the planning staff, the building staff, fire department, have all met with residents and board members of Caliente. There's been two council meetings in the past on that issue and proposal. We've worked with their board closely. They had their own citizen review meeting, internal, and then we've done the appropriate advertisement and the public hearing notices. The basic details, and to make this simpler, it was all generated or turned into a, I'm sorry, I thought I heard different, okay, all turned into graphic representation on how these would be handled. Replacement of new, or placement of new units, replacement of older and existing units, and then the placement of auxiliary or accessory buildings and how the driveways will be located on the property. These would be included as exhibits attached to the ordinance if the council does adopt it. Findings from Planning and Zoning Commission, again, the proposed amendments are consistent with needs of the community and the town. The proposed amendments of the site would facilitate ongoing development and replacement efforts of the local residents. And one of the main impetuses on this is the, from Caliente del Sol, is to be able to upgrade and do better improvements. They're encouraging their residents to bring in newer units to replace some of the old ones that are deteriorating and may have issues. And then any conditions that the council may have that they might wish to add to the recommendation. Do you have any questions?
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this topic? Does the council have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
I have a comment.
Mr. Anderson?
I have a comment, okay. I'd just like to express my appreciation for all the work that's been done with Caliente and their board. Their board, fire department, inspection department, planning and zoning department, there's been a lot of work that has gone into this, and I think we've got a, just a absolutely beautiful agreement here on what started out to be a very difficult situation. So I want to applaud all those people that have put so much time and effort into this. Thank you.
Councilwoman Larson?
I just wanted to clarify for myself and for the public as well, that when we met with Caliente in 2018, sat down, that these drawings, although they looked very familiar with me, and I wanted to make sure that there wasn't any modifications to anything that we had discussed at that point, to where we are today. Is that accurate?
We did fine-tuning. There were no alterations, no.
Okay. And by fine-tuning, can you clarify?
Well, there was, it's because of the nature of the, how the sidewalks are laid out out there, and that they are part of the private property and certain measurements, it was just final, you know, defining of how things would be measured. And we've met with Caliente representatives to, you know, tie that down.
And everybody is okay with that? We've come to that conclusion? Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Closing call to the public. The second reading will be on August 15th, or I'm sorry, August 5th. Item 11 is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. 11A, Resolution Number 1709-19, discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, accepting tribal gaming funds granted by the Gila River Indian Community. Item B, Resolution Number 1710-19, discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, authorizing the town to enter into a grant agreement with the City of Tucson Police Department regarding the Arizona High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. Item C, ratification of expenditures for Truly Painting &amp; More LLC for painting, for repair and painting services to multiple town facilities, Town Hall, Cocapelli, and the Silver King Marketplace, in a final not-to-exceed amount of $45,906.37 for all locations. Item D, approval of the June 3rd, June 17th, June 19th, and June 21st, 2019, council, town council meeting minutes. Item E, receive and file the following board and commission meeting minutes. I, May 29th, 2019, Historic District Advisory Commission meeting minutes. That is the consent agenda. Are there any requests to remove any items from the agenda?
I'd like to remove E.
Any other requests to remove an item either from the public or from council?
Item C.
Okay, item C. With that, I need a motion on the remaining items.
I move to, I just totally drew a blank. Somebody, there we go. Yeah, I motion to approve the consent agenda with removal of items C and E.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Presiding councilwoman, I don't think we had a second on that.
Oh, I thought I heard a second.
A second.
Let's do this again. Okay. Let's do this over.
Okay. I motion to approve the consent agenda with the item removal of C and E.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Item C, Councilwoman Hughes.
C.
Oh, I'm sorry, C.
I'm just, on the Cocapelli part, that's, what, what did we do there? I mean, you know, there's no building to repair and paint. That's why I'm wondering what.
This was part of the repair to the hair salon to the north.
Oh.
We did the removal of those beams. We did the repair of that through the Adobe contractor, and we painted to match.
Well, it would have been nice if it would have, instead of saying Cocapelli maybe repairs to the beauty parlor.
Well.
I mean, just for general knowledge, because, you know, people, they look at it and they go, there's a vacant lot.
I apologize for the lack of clarity. It was part of Cocapelli, but I fully understand it could have been written a little bit differently.
That's all.
And then item E, Councilwoman Hughes.
Um.
Presiding Councilwoman, we need to act on C first before we go to E.
Okay, so, I need a motion on item C.
I'll make a motion that we accept item C.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Now, Councilwoman Hughes.
Okay. Mr. Billingsley. This, this, I need some clarification. I went and read through these, the meeting minutes of the community, under the Community Development Report section on page 2, the Florence Redevelopment Plan. I, I'm, I need, I'm gonna read part of it. It said, it states that he, Mr. Harmer, showed, showed that the existing redevelopment area and stated that the area will stay the same. Mr. Harmer explained that the new plan will account for meaningful incentives in current state statutes. Then Vice Chair Adams asked what a redevelopment plan did. Mr. Harmer said that the plan helps qualify CD, BG money, and giblet tax incentives. She asked how it works with the opportunity zones. Mr. Harmer explained it did not work with the opportunity zones because there was none within the redevelopment area. My question is, can you clarify for me the boundary lines of the Florence Redevelopment Plan?
Unfortunately, I can't right now. I don't have access to that, but we could certainly send that out to council. It's quite a large area.
I have it.
Okay.
And downtown, with, which includes the historic district.
Most of Main Street is in the redevelopment district, yeah.
Well, unfortunately, our, Mr. Harmer said we did not have an opportunity, not the opportunity zone. Was my next clarification was that, I was given on April 12th, the map of the opportunity zone that shows that all of downtown, the south, that touches Butte, Plant Road is your west, and then it goes up, and it, that includes Territorial Square and the historic downtown. So, what I'm wanting to do is that I, I would like, one last clarification. On March 15th, this brought, we were given a presentation by GIS, the new tech person, that gave all of his presentation concerning the maps that were available to the public. And I request that you make sure that the opportunity zone was placed on. Well, as of today, the opportunity zone map is still not on the website. So, I'm asking that, that that could be added this week yet? And that I would also ask that you would have Director Harmer contact Vice Chair Adams and Commissioner Michael, and provide him with the corrected information, and that he refreshes materials, and that, to explain how the town is positioned so that it can help with redevelopment issues on the redevelopment, and how these things overlap, the redevelopment plan, the opportunity zone, and the infill district.
Okay, I, let me just say what I think I heard you say.
Okay.
The, the minutes are the minutes, and in, in a, in a way, the redevelopment zone doesn't work with opportunity zones. One is a state designation, one's a federal designation, and they cover very different things.
Right.
However, you are absolutely correct. The opportunity zone does cross boundaries with the redevelopment zone. They both have very large boundaries, as we know. So, your request is that we get the opportunity zone mapped through the GIS department and make sure that that's available. I think that that's something, I'm looking at IT here, but I think that's something that was requested of Victor. So, we have two people from IT here today. They can certainly carry that message on, and I don't see any reason why that couldn't be done this week.
Thank you.
Should be a very simple exercise. Secondarily, I think there was a request there that we have Mr. Harmer, who's here in the audience, reach out to the chairman and the vice chairman of the HDAC, and make sure that they're aware of those three unique areas and how they interact with one another. I think that's simple to have happen, no problem.
Thank you.
If, could I just add? If you're gonna go to all that, there's some deadlines with the opportunity zone. So, you might want to make sure that if we're gonna share that information, that we share all of that information, because there were some deadlines with when you had to participate in the opportunity zone by, and I think we're like this far from the deadline that you have to be already invested in the opportunity zone in order to participate and stuff like that. So, if we're gonna go to all that, we might as well include that little piece in there.
And, no problem. As, as a matter of fact, I don't see any reason why we couldn't, as a matter of fact, we're, we're working with an individual in the back right now towards a potential opportunity zone project, and he happens to be sitting next to Mr. Harmer. So, we've, we've had a couple of meetings recently. The program rules just came out about six weeks ago. There are deadlines, and there are specific requirements and priorities with respect to that. If council would like, we could do a short presentation at the next meeting with respect to that.
I think that would be great.
Okay, we'll do that.
I make a, oh, sorry. A motion to receive, to, to accept the May 29th Historic District Advisory Commission meeting.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 12A, discussion and possible action on the proposed improvements for the roundabout at State Route 287 and State Route 79B. Mr. Solis.
Good evening, Presiding Mayor, members of council. After the last council meeting regarding the roundabout, there was a request for additional public outreach, which we performed last Wednesday. And so, part of this presentation will be going over the public outreach, the results of that. Primarily, what we, what we did in that public outreach was go over the results of the DCR, how the criteria was created for the matrix of scoring. We went over all the alternatives, as well as some of the alternatives that were discontinued. So, tonight will not be that same presentation. That presentation was much longer, and we're here to present the, again, public outreach comments. The comments represent groups of comments, so none, one specific will be a person in quotes. It is just a summary of all those comments. So, again, as a general reminder, the roundabout is on SR 87 and SR 79B, and the purpose of need design, concept report, environmental document, and joint project agreement. That joint project agreement was approved by council previously. And the alternatives I discussed previously were five alternatives. Essentially, one, no build, which would be the existing conditions, three roundabouts in various configuration, and one signalized T intersection, which would be in the bottom right corner and would be alternative four. We also looked at design concept alternatives considered to discuss and continued, which would be a single signalized intersection connecting SR 287, 79B, Main Street, and Florence Heights at a single point. Two signalized intersections, one at Main Street, 287, 79B, and the southern one at SR 79B Florence Heights Drive. This is the single traffic signal, single point intersection, and as demonstrated, this would take out that church. The geometrics to align all that do not work, and so this was eliminated previously as a fatal flaw. It, the road is literally over the church.
Over what?
Over the church.
Well, okay, yeah, if you start curving it there, but you could still have a slight curve to where it's not over the church. See where the old road would be or is? See where it goes into the Y? Okay, you know, and curves, curves this way and that way. Why not just curve it right, right on?
It will not meet the geometric requirements outlined under ASH 24, again, design speed, site visibility, stopping distances. This was evaluated fully and does not meet those requirements.
Yeah, there's a, there's a ton of, there's a ton of room there towards the Burger King and Mormon Church, all that area in there. Like I said, why not, you could come over with, you could move the Main Street, move it to the west to help line that up, because then you'd have more room. Anyway, I'd have to sit down with you and show you. I mean, I went, I went through this before with, when the state was here. Sounds to me like they've got it in their heart just to do a roundabout no matter what. And that, that's the dumbest thing we can do, I think. So, you know, I think there is a way to do a four-way intersection. There's gotta be. There's plenty of land there to work with. You know, it's just that they don't want to, in my opinion.
I unfortunately don't want to comment for ADA.
No, I know that. I'm just, I'm just stating where I'm coming from so everybody knows that I think the roundabout is a waste of money and time, and it's gonna, it's gonna be worse than what's there now. There isn't that many wrecks right now, I don't think. I don't, you know, I live right by there. I don't see a ton of accidents, you know, and at this point in time, you know, maybe it's better to wait on it, I mean.
Let's, let's get through the presentation, and then we'll have comments from the council.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
Okay, like I said, I just want to end with, this was studied significantly, and it would not be able to geometrically occur without significant property takes. If we wanted to look at moving the road to the north, then that would take properties to the north. There is no way of aligning these. This intersection did not meet the stacking distance requirement between the signals and operational. So, this was removed as a fatal flaw as well, did not meet the criteria. And so, these alternatives resulted in geometry and operations that were not optimal or desirable. Thus, these alternatives were discontinued. Moving forward, we had the four alternatives, and one of the key statements here is, we looked at without geometric or right-of-way constraints. Previous staff had had these as constraints, and we kind of removed those to relax the designers a little bit and understand what a true DCR should evaluate. Right-of-way is normally evaluated as part of the project, so. Here is a list of all the design criteria. It's pretty exhaustive, but I'll read it pretty fast. Capacity, queue lengths, travel time, access and circulation, multimodal accommodations, which was brought up previously, safety, right-of-way, irrigation canal impacts, drainage patterns, environmental impact area, and construction costs. This scoring matrix represents all the criteria, and I do have all the backup tonight. If we want to look through any of these specifically after the presentation, all the slides are there from the presentation last Wednesday. Again, I didn't want to bore everyone going over every single one of these again.
Can I ask a quick question at this point? Just, which one's alternative one, which one's alternative two, three, and four? Like, if we're looking at your alternative sheet, which one is each one?
It's probably easier to get back to, here is, alternative one is the single roundabout, and this should have been included in the entire, it may not have been. Okay, we stopped it at the end of the presentation, so, I apologize. We, yeah, it's on the website, but as far as your handouts go, they, it ends at the questions. I did have these as requested, just in case. So, alternative one's the single roundabout. Alternative two is a single roundabout with a T intersection. Alternative three is the dual roundabout, the double roundabout. Alternative four is a traffic signal with a T intersection.
Thank you.
So, getting back to the scoring criteria, one of the key concepts brought up was is that we did not weight the criteria, which is often a normal evaluation. On this here, safety is the number one point of this project, and we didn't weigh it extra. And that kind of penalized the roundabouts because they scored higher, as well as, we did not look at weighing level of service or travel time, which the roundabouts fare better as well. So, this is an unweighted scoring matrix. So, there's no cooking of the books, if you will. This is a standard, straight-cut scoring where everything scores the same. And alternative, alternative three was the highest-scoring alternative, not by staff, not by ADA, but by the numbers. Like I said, I do have all the backup if we want to go through some of that. The public involvement, general concerns, I've broken this up into several different categories. General concerns, everyone agreed that the intersection needs to be upgraded regardless of the preferred solution. That seemed to be a comment. And when I say everyone, I'm not sure, I didn't individually take a poll, that just was what I was conveyed to. It seemed like that everyone seemed to agree that way. Private property access, loss of access. We do have some people here in the audience that attended that night, and that was one of their primary concerns, is, am I gonna lose access? The automotive shop, how am I gonna get all my deliveries? I have semi trucks that come in here. So, that was conveyed to staff. Private property of affected parties still having public involvement as the process continues. We were very clear that night that this is just the beginning of, again, the final design, if you will. If and when private property access is either limited or private property is a right-of-way issue, we will meeting with those individual property owners to make sure that we try to mitigate it as much as possible. Those were the answers in the public outreach. Drainage, again, the automotive shop brought up, the drainage of the existing intersection already has some drainage concerns. So, we will be passing that on to the design team to look at that and hopefully mitigate that through the retentions that will be provided in the intersection. Will this affect properties along Main Street from Keating Street to Salius Street? That was another question. The simple response is this is not a final design. We are looking at doing a final design. If and when some of those properties are affected, we'll be working with them. I think, again, you want to take out the overwhelming concern by, some of the affected parties is, are we going to be involved anymore? Is there gonna be any more public outreach? And the answer is absolutely. There will be additional public outreach, and specifically for those affected parties. Could there be more accidents in the first few weeks, months, when the intersection is changed, specifically due to a roundabout? That was a question by a council member. And it is always possible, when there's a change made, whether it be a roundabout, a traffic signal, geometric change, there's always an opportunity to have additional confusion for those first few days. I remember very vividly sitting at a very busy intersection where there were dual left turns, southbound, and only two receiving lanes, and watching it the first day, I was positive there'd be accidents. I was wrong. There was never any accidents over the first few days, and so, what you see sometimes is, again, a little bit of horn beeping, a little bit of people understanding the changes, and people do figure it out. But absolutely, I would agree, could there be more accidents in the first few days or close calls? Yeah, it's possible. Public involvements, roundabout-specific concerns. People stated that roundabouts are dangerous. My simple response is that statistics do not bear that out. Roundabouts are much safer. And this is studied across the United States and actually internationally, but roundabouts have shown to be much safer as far as property damage, as far as human life, the accidents that occur are at a much lesser rate and less impactful. Roundabouts are confusing. I would argue that roundabouts, when improperly designed and improperly I would argue that roundabouts, when improperly designed and improperly signed, can be confusing, absolutely. And for people who are not familiar with those, can be. There's no denying that any change as far as a human expectation standpoint, it can affect the driver for a few days or a few cycles through the intersection. And we'll get through some of the pros later on, but one of the things that I would state is that a lot of people's concerns about roundabouts or for poorly designed roundabouts, whether it be again, design radius or signage, roundabouts have come a long way in years, adramatic. Roundabouts are more difficult for older citizens to negotiate. This roundabout is not right outside of an active adult community. The demographic is all of the traveling public. So I don't have an exact response to that. It does affect more than just one demographic, it affects the entire community. This is the entrance to the entire town, the southern entrance. This is one resident, but I thought it was important to say, one resident would rather have longer delays versus the complexity of a roundabout. Will the curbs on the roundabout, and this kind of addresses, this is close to addressing the, the question that was in, um, called the public, will the curbs on the roundabout be mountable and/or damaged by semi trucks? And yes, the roundabout will contain curbs that are part of the turning movement template. They will be designed to be run over by semi trucks or they will be designed to be mountable by semi trucks. There are a lot of semi trucks that travel through the intersection. Will the semi trucks be able to negotiate the roundabout? Absolutely, there will be, there's already a turning template that's part of the initial design that will be carried out through in the final design. The turning template takes into account the design vehicle, which to this point would be a large semi truck. If the preferred alternative is implemented, one person would recommend just a single lane roundabout for both roundabouts. Town's response is that will not meet the requirements of future growth for the town of Florence. And while considered, it was again, eliminated due to fatal flaw. The design team did look at that. It's a capacity issue. Roundabout specific concerns continued, how do pedestrians cross the roundabout? And so there are specific areas and then there's a pedestrian refuge. So there was some kind of confusion on how that the pedestrians cross the roundabouts, including it wasn't included in the video. But, um, pedestrians, uh, roundabouts are implemented in areas where large pedestrian movements occur and including bicyclists like Mockingbird Lane at, um, in Paradise Valley. So they are definitely user-friendly in other areas. That's debatable, not every community would agree with that statement, but it definitely has happened. That's a repeat of the school, oh no, I'm sorry. Will the school buses be able to negotiate the roundabouts? Once again, they will be part of the design template. Um, the videos on the existing condition, there were gasps. As far as how poorly it worked in the 2040 design condition, there is massive backup on there. So essentially, um, summarizing, people understood that something has to be done. Alternative four, which the traffic signal with stop control at Florence Heights also performed poorly. You can see large amounts of backup for that. And alternative three, the double roundabout, clearly flowed traffic the best of the video shown that night. Public involvement positives. Once again, everyone agreed that the intersection needs to be upgraded regardless of the preferred solution. There were no comments on the scoring criteria, rationale of the DCR, anything mentioned regarding the DCR. I guess that might be more of a neutral comment, but I just wanted to make sure that no one essentially attacked the science behind the DCR. There were no concerns about the scoring criteria, it seemed to make sense to the general public. A resident from Colorado said that while she and other residents didn't originally like roundabouts, after the installation, city-town loved them, they were great. And so for myself, talking to communities like Prescott, Sedona, Payson, that have roundabouts, especially next to economic development, Lowe's, Home Depot, Walmart, they absolutely love the roundabouts in their community. They are huge, huge proponents for roundabouts as far as, again, safety, um, bicyclists, hikers in these different areas, they love it. And they love what's happened as far as the economic development that has occurred around these roundabouts. The traffic calming effect. One of the other positives was, the solution should facilitate economic growth and the development of the downtown. And one thing that we see is that while developers are very keen on traffic volumes and some of them do like traffic signals, what they don't like is delay. And so large delays is going to hurt economic development. So that was discussed at length. And so, um, staff's preferred alternative is alternative three, based on the scoring criteria. And not necessarily my opinion, but strictly on the scoring criteria. It was the highest scoring criteria and that is two roundabouts, one multi-lane roundabout and a single-lane roundabout at Florence Heights. Florence Heights shifted further to the south to provide additional separation. That, are there any additional questions?
Councilmember's questions?
Well, uh, yes. I, uh, I agree with Councilman Hawkins. I, I prefer the, uh, the, uh, the proposal where it was, uh, cutting off part of the church. I think that that road could be straightened out, put that into a T there and, and you wouldn't have to touch the church.
A T-intersection that would eliminate Florence Heights would not, would not meet, again, the results of our regional transportation plan. It would eliminate a high-capacity corridor, an east-west corridor corridor.
No, I didn't say it would eliminate, uh, the Florence Heights. I'd leave it there, I would just move that other road, uh, to the, that, that's coming in. Uh, I guess that's, uh, 287. I would move it, uh, to the north. About fifty feet.
Any comment on that?
That's my, my input.
I can't understand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time understanding John's comments.
Ma'am, the-
If you look at that, uh, if you look at the discontinued, uh, map and it shows a, what, five or six-lane road going in, a part of it, uh, it goes over the church building. And then just move that 287 road off of the church and move it, just that would be to the west by fifty, hundred feet, whatever it takes.
Ma'am, um, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we're essentially, um, reviewing the design concept report and ADOT would like for us to, uh, approve of the design concept report. It's not the full design of the intersection, the designer hasn't even been selected yet. Uh, however, it does a quality job of analyzing the intersection, the travel, uh, demand, uh, movement, safety, et cetera. And the consultant, along with their team, has provided an analysis on four alternatives. Uh, the option that is being brought up, uh, by the vice mayor, as I understand it, uh, and brought up by Mr. Hawkins early in the meeting, has been eliminated. This is not a town study, this is not a town consultant, this is an ADOT study, an ADOT consultant. And ultimately, ADOT will choose, uh, which, which improvement is provided. It was requested by council at the last meeting to do additional outreach. Um, not only was there an additional public meeting, but there were individual meetings, uh, with property owners, some of which are in the audience today. I think multiple meetings with individual property owners, uh, that, that own some of those adjacent parcels. Very complicated, uh, discussion, very complicated design, but uh, a lot of, uh, very high-qualified individuals involved in, in producing the document, uh, as it stands. The next step following, uh, the adoption by the town of the DCR would be for ADOT to hire a, a consultant to complete final design where more finite, uh, answers and, and more outreach would occur.
Is it safe to assume though that, that number three option would not be eliminated?
Yes, ma'am, I mean, very clearly, ADOT's consultant, uh, said that, uh, the multi-lane roundabout is the preferred altern, preferred alternative. So if the council were to accept the DCR and its results, it would be accepting, uh, that alternative three or alternative C, we understand that's a preferred alternative to meet the purpose and need for the individual study.
Remind me again what DCR stands for?
Design Concept Report. So it is looking at a variety of concepts to, um, to address the purpose and need as determined on the project to make it able to receive state and federal funding.
And we are being asked to approve the DCR?
Yes.
That exists today?
Yes.
But I'm also hearing that we're, we're being given the opportunity to mitigate some of the concerns that we've been hearing from the public during that design concept review period. Uh, if we do not approve the DCR tonight, we're delaying the whole process completely by how much?
It was very key at the last meeting to approve, uh, the agreement with ADOT, um, which came before you last time, so that they could move forward with the environmental review of the intersection because there is a concern that there's cultural resources that ultimately could change the design that, that exists and would need to be mitigated for as well as to free up the opportunity to receive funding. If we would not have approved that agreement with ADOT, the project would have been in, in jeopardy. That was approved. Council asked us to do additional outreach. Additional outreach has been conducted, um, and from those individuals that I've talked to, they were happy with, uh, the outreach that was conducted and the ear that was lent by staff towards the project. If you don't approve, uh, the DCR, ultimately it goes back to ADOT and they decide whether they're gonna move forward with the project or not. But we are on the hook to pay for the design. The town agreed years ago, uh, that ADOT would pay for the DCR, ADOT would pay for the design, uh, the environmental with respect to the project. But the actual construction, once the, the plan set is developed, is the responsibility of the town. The town has gone to two different entities to receive some funding to offset, uh, the town's cost to the project. I want to say, Chris, at about 1.78 million we've received in funding?
2.5 million.
2.5 million.
First round of MAG, 500,000 and 250,000. So we're at about 3.25 million total.
So we've, uh, we have the ability, if we move forward, to get the project for the most part funded by an outside entity uh, instead of funding by the town, which is, was the plan to initially do the project.
My, my biggest concern obviously is that any concerns that our citizens have with regard to the design are satisfied through the design process and that we mitigate any impact on those citizens. I, I know not everybody likes roundabouts and I've had good and bad experiences with them and we're never going to make everybody happy with a roundabout. But I think it's important that we make everybody happy, that we're making an effort to mitigate their individual concerns as they exist within the town. And, uh, I can support the DCR under those circumstances. Uh, any other comments?
So I attended the meeting last week and it was actually very good and very informative and helped me kind of get a better grasp on this than the meeting we had before that. So, um, my concerns are, like with the auto, with the auto body shop or the mechanic shop, he had already mentioned that due to some other changes in flow of water there, he's currently experiencing some water issues that were not created by him or any changes he made to his property, it was made somewhere else, which then made the water come and flow and it's already causing damage. So I agree with him and his concern that we don't want to add more, but I'm also hoping that we're going to try to fix the current situation so that he's not experiencing any more damage to his property, especially with, uh, monsoons hitting us, hopefully anytime now. Um, and then just, you know, I, I don't want to see people struggling to get into their communities or it affecting that. So for me, it's not so much the roundabouts, cause I'm used to those. I'm more concerned about if we eliminate someone's access to their property or they have two entrances and now they're only gonna have one, how do we fix that for them? And I don't want it to just be like, oh, well, sorry. You just happened to put your business in a spot that who knew 20 years ago was then going to turn into this. So I just want to make sure that when we're doing this, that we're taking great care and making sure those people that are gonna be affected, that, that they're done right by making sure that if they have two entrances and exits, that they still end up with two entrances and exits, they just might not be in the same place. We might find another way or we might help them make their one entrance larger so that semis can get in at the same time as other traffic's coming or whatever or so that people trying to get to their community can get in and out. Roundabouts don't bother me, I'm, I'm just used to them. I, my community had them in Denver and shopping malls have them now. So I, the roundabouts don't bother me. I just want to make sure that our residents aren't being negatively impacted, especially our businesses. Cause there are, they struggle in the summertime, I want to make sure that we're not adding impact to that.
Councilwoman Larson, did you have some comments?
Well, first of all, I wanted to say, I, I totally agree and appreciate both of your opinions on making sure the republic's opinion is heard, valued and processed. Um, one specific question I sort of had about that entrance and exit on option three was I don't even know exactly what the street name is, I apologize. But if you're looking at the map here, where the, the, um, upright, uprightmost street, if I were to try to take a left to say to go to Burger King, how far does this long, um, center median extend further north? How far right am I gonna have to drive before I have to turn around to come back to go back into Burger King?
I don't have that exact distance in my head, I don't really know without having more information available to me.
That, things like that are what bothers me, which sort of ties into Michelle's point that if I am somebody who lives here, works here, I want easy accessibility to other businesses around me um, or easy access to make those short-term loops back around to be able to go to those businesses without causing an impact to them. So that is something that is concerning to me and I want to make sure in the design review going forward that that is addressed and mentioned. I also do agree with, you know, the T-intersection makes the most sense. Um, but I'm not about to infringe on some church to, to get that accomplished. So if it's not feasible, then I also have to recognize that it's not just our decision, that we do have to work with ADOT and that we have to make this a joint venture, um, for everyone's best interest.
The traveling public that would generally get through, um, Keating Street would probably find other avenues of using Florence Heights. Um, the traveling public does adapt their driving habits over time to find the most efficient way. They kind of have Google map built into their head and kind of work through it over time. So they will find a different way if there's a bigger inconvenience.
I'm just, what I don't like is that these don't really have breaks for U-turns or anything like that. So if you make a wrong loop, which I understand in this circumstance, you really don't want them, especially in that middle piece, to be making a U-turn. But I'm just concerned about the extension that we can't see on the image. It's how far those go before you can U-turn to go back.
Councilwoman Hughes, did you have any comments? Councilman?
Oh, yeah, well, right there on that, uh, picture of three, see where the right-of-way is? It says existing right-of-way. Okay, and then you see where, uh, Anthony's Garage is there on Florence Heights? There's plenty of room there for those to come together with a T. There's plenty of room. You said it would be over the church, well, no, they put it over the church. Uh, so they, because they didn't want just a simple T project. They wanted something all complicated and everything. But you see where I'm?
Do they have to extend?
There, there, it says exec.
Yes, sir.
That's not over the church, that, that is, that is state right-of-way.
That switchback could not occur geometrically within the design constraints of design speed under ASH-FOOR. It cannot be done.
Because they don't want to, it can be done. I just drew it out here, you know, looking there, that, that proves that there's plenty of room for it, but they, they keep doing it, I, what, what is that? What's that lower roundabout? Where the heck's that going on the east? Where is that? What, that's not Florence Heights, Florence Heights is a long ways up. So you're gonna have to go across the canal or, or where there used to be a canal.
Yes, sir.
To do that double roundabout, well, that, to me, that's ridiculous when you, whatever, I don't know. I guess we're into- I guess we're into too deep to do anything about it, I suppose.
Okay. With that discussed, any other comments?
Yeah, Chris, at that meeting, though, you did mention that there may end up being, maybe, another alternative that would come about. If, for some reason, alternative number three ends up being taken over because alternative number five were to come about and in, ended up being a better solution all around, I don't know what it is. It just kind of like, hey, there might be another alternative. So if something were to come up, it would go back, the public would get to know, get to see it before it happened. Like, it wouldn't just be like, oh, we told you we were going to get two roundabouts and now you're getting something completely different, or now it's going to be three roundabouts. Like, there wouldn't be a drastic change without the public being notified first, right?
The change that I was discussing is not drastic. It is merely a morphing of alternative three. It, it takes the benefits of alternative three and kind of changes the geometrics away. Most people would argue it is alternative three, just it looks different. I guess to the engineering community, it'd be the same. To the traveling public, it would look a little bit different. But if that is the choo, the chosen alternative as we move forward, in forward, in the final design, we would have additional public outreach.
Mr. Billingsley?
Madam Presiding Officer, I don't know how to address you. Um, I've got a perfect example. Before you tonight is just recommending that we accept the DCR. Last year, we completed a project with ADOT that is a little over a thousand feet from this project, and that's where 79B met 79, uh, out at the highway, which was another wonky, strange design that, that had caused some fatalities and it needed to be fixed. Originally, and, and Bill may remember this because he was probably on the, on the council at the time, the original result for that project was a roundabout. Um, I think that's been 10 or so years ago, uh, when that was discussed, but when ADOT came in and did their environmental reporting on that project, and some of you will remember this because it happened since I've been here, ADOT came back and said, we can't do a roundabout because there's too many impacts to cultural resources, uh, because there was a town site that was adjacent to that new intersection now, and it essentially had to become a T intersection during the design phase. So to the council members' comment, we did additional outreach. We came back to council. We let council know that it was no longer to be a, a roundabout, that it would be a T intersection that would be stop-controlled on the 79B side. The project was far less grandiose than was originally supposed to occur, but it had to be limited in that way due to the NEPA process. There's nothing to say that alternative C here won't be impacted by the NEPA process because it, it could be, uh, and it could be drastically. But as to what Chris said, once again, there will be outreach, there will be discussions with the adjacent property owners and, and that information will be brought back to council because ultimately, we're going to have to bid that design, uh, for that construction, if that makes sense.
Okay. So I'm a little unclear as to, do we need a motion to specifically approve the DCR, alternative number three? Is that what we need a motion for? What?
No, ma'am. Uh, we actually don't approve it. We just accept the results of the DCR and as part of those results, they did the evaluation of these alternatives. So we're not saying that item C is our preferred alternative. All we're saying is we accept the results, uh, of the DCR as provided by ADOT and their consultant.
Okay. So that's what we would need a motion for?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So unless there are further comments, I would need a motion to that effect.
I have one more question. How many other engineers have looked at this besides ADOT engineers?
Well, again, there was a private consultant team, there's your staff, who myself was-
Hired by ADOT, right?
I'm not hired by ADOT, sir. I'm, I'm, I'm here to, again, use my best engineering judgment to represent the town, the council, town manager. I independently looked at this, absolutely.
And, and in your opinion, there's no way that you can connect Florence Heights with, uh, 278?
Not meaning the ASHLO design criteria or not involving private properties. No, sir. There is not.
That's not, no, there's plenty of property there that's not private. Like I said, there's, you know, I, I'd like to, I don't know, sit out and wait on that.
I would entertain a motion.
I motion that we accept the recommendations by ADOT based on their DCR evaluation.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Aye.
Item 12B, ordinance number 676-19, discussion approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the town of Florence, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for general municipal expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2020. Mr. Sanchez.
Again, uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Uh, again, I'm here tonight to ask for approval of the FY 2019, 2020, uh, primary tax levy increase for the town. So Arizona revised statute subsection 42-17, 107 requires that whenever there's a proposed primary tax, uh, property tax increase, a truth and taxation hearing must be held. Uh, the council held a public meeting on July 1st, 2019, which was our last council meeting. Uh, the recommended, uh, tax rate for FY 1920 is, uh, 1.0738, so roughly a dollar seven, dollar eight, uh, per $100 of net assessed valuation. Uh, the levy will collect approximately 1.1 million dollars. That, uh, that would, uh, that levy would add to the general fund, uh, revenue base. Uh, it will provide funding for all departments within the general fund. For homeowners, uh, the combined, uh, primary tax levy from all taxing jurisdictions may not exceed 1% of assessed valuation, and, uh, I'll provide an example of the, of the next slide. So the, uh, this, uh, property tax statement, uh, depicts an example of where your primary tax, uh, primary taxes can be found. Uh, the amount that I highlighted in the red box, um, is where the homeowner could, uh, locate the, uh, the amount of the tax. So, uh, if you take the, uh, net assessed valuation that I have highlighted in yellow and you divide that by 100, again, it's per 100 of net assessed valuation, uh, times the tax rate, uh, you will get that tax amount. Um, in this particular case, this 2018 property tax statement, uh, the tax amount was $153.30. This, uh, property tax statement is also shows an, it's also an example of a homeowner that's over the 1% of the assessed valuation. Um, and the reason why, uh, I know that is because it has, on this property tax statement, it has a reduction rate and it's on the left-hand column of this property tax statement. It's called reduction rate. That rate is one, uh, 1, 1.18851% over the state limit. So if you take the net assessed valuation, highlighted in yellow, uh, divided by 100 again, but this time if you times it, uh, times the reduction rate, uh, you'll get a $261.29 credit. Now that credit is shown right above the total tax due for 2018 and it's in parenthesis, so that credit is $261.29. Uh, so, uh, this, uh, slide here, uh, kind of answers the question, where do my taxes go? Uh, so, uh, on a percentage basis, the town of Florence, uh, rough, gets roughly about 8.9% of the ta, uh, property taxes, uh, that we saw on the previous slide. Uh, Pinellas County will get about 31.9%. Florence Unified School District, uh, gets roughly about 39.2%. Uh, Central Arizona College, about 17.4, and 3.9% goes to other. Uh, FY 2019, 2020 property tax rates, uh, this slide here kind of shows, uh, what our tax rate is at the, our combined tax rate, uh, for the town of Florence, uh, compared with other cities and towns, uh, our neighbors. Uh, so if you take the primary tax rate that, that I'm proposing, the 1.0740, and you combine that with secondary tax rate, which w, we don't have here, uh, the total property tax rate is 1.0740, again, what I'm proposing. Uh, if you kind of look at the, our neighboring cities, uh, it kind of gives you an idea of what others, what their combined property tax rate and their secondary tax rate. You take a look at the city of Maricopa, they're at 5.990%. Uh, this slide, uh, like in previous slides, just kind of shows a history of what, uh, the, uh, tax rate's been for the last four to five years. Again, uh, proposing a dollar seven for FY 2020. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar home, again, if you divide that by 100, uh, which is the net assessed valuation, times the proposed tax rate, uh, the tax amount for the homeowner for FY 2020 would be roughly $107.38. Anyone have any questions regarding the proposed?
Councilmember questions?
Primary?
I just think it's, it's great to see that our rate is going down for this year. If there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion.
I motion that we approve ordinance number 676-19.
Do we need a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Hughes?
Aye.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you. Item 12C, ordinance number 677-19, discussion approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the streetlight improvement districts 1, 2, and 3, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for streetlight operations for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2020. Mr. Sanchez?
Okay. Again, uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. I'm here to ask for approval for FY 2019, 2020, uh, sec, uh, secondary tax levy increase for SLID 3. So the area in blue is where C, uh, SLID 3 is located. As I previously mentioned in, in the previous, uh, presentation, again, if anyone in council or any member of the public, uh, would like to know where their home is located within this SLID, um, if they can just contact me or, uh, any member of my staff, uh, again, we'll be happy to assist, uh, anyone who wants to know where, where their home is Arizona revised statutes subsection 48-616 requires that the, uh, governing body make annual statements and estimates of expenses of the district that shall be provided, uh, for by the levy and collection of ad valorem taxes on the assessed value of all property, all real, uh, property real and personal in the district. The town advertised the levy increase in the newspaper and town website. Uh, council held a public hearing on July 1st, 2019. Again, that was our previous council meeting. Uh, the SLID history here, uh, kind of just shows when these slids were created. Uh, SLID 1 was created by resolution number, uh, 965-05 on October 24th, 2005. Uh, SLID 2 created by resolution number 985-06 on February 6th, 2006. Uh, SLID 3 was created by resolution number 1053-07 on April, uh, 16th, 2007. Uh, SLID 1 and SLID 2 have levied enough taxes, uh, between the creation years and 2012 to pay for 2019, 2020, uh, electrical costs and maintenance fees. Uh, for these districts, a levy, uh, has not been assessed since 2012, so we're not looking to increase the, the levy in, uh, slids 1 and 2. Uh, SLID 3, um, has not required a levy also since 2012, but there are not enough funds, uh, to cover the projected expenses, uh, for FY 19, uh, FY 20, or 20. So, uh, this, uh, statement here, uh, just gives kind of, uh, council and the public where they can see when the last time, uh, SLID was, uh, a levy was, uh, part of your property tax statement. So this goes back to 2011. Um, again, what I have highlighted, um, is the, in the red box will show the homeowner where, uh, the tax would be located. Um, so it, to, if you take the, uh, net assessed, uh, valuation that I have highlighted in yellow, again, if you divide that by the, uh, 100, which is the net assessed valuation, um, times the tax rate, uh, you would get that tax amount. So for this homeowner in 2011, uh, the tax amount that they would have paid was $201.80. Um, the tax rate here, though, is at the max amount, so this, we can only, uh, the max amount that could be levied is a dollar 20. Um, so in this particular year, it was levied at the max amount. Uh, SLID 3, again, is the only district that is seeking a, a levy increase. Uh, SLID 3 recommended rate for FY 1920 is about 12 cents per $100 of net assessed valuation. Uh, an example, a hundred thousand dollar home, again, divided by the $100 net assessed valuation, uh, a homeowner would pay about $12.07 for FY 20. Uh, the levy that will be collected would be about $22,000 and that amount collected would be used for electrical and maintenance costs. Does anyone have any, uh, questions?
Councilmember questions?
Uh, yes, I have some questions.
Councilmember-
At our last meeting-
Go ahead.
Go ahead. At our last meeting, uh, there was some information that was given out that said that the cost of the downtown light was far less than what it was in Anthem. I had the town clerk, uh, go do some homework on, on what the lights were costing us downtown versus what it's costing us in Anthem. The downtown lights are costing us $80,248 a year. The SLID is costing us $87,841, so there's not that much of a difference, yet we are implying that we are going to require the SLID area to pay for their own lights. Uh, and the downtown area is going to be paid for not out of general funds, that was something else that was, we were misinformed on. These downtown lights are being paid for out of Hearst. So I'm of the opinion, if, if we're going to pay for the downtown lights out of Hearst, we should pay for all the lights out of Hearst.
Mr. Billingsley?
I, it's really hard to hear, but I, I think I, I think I got the gist of what the, my Vice Mayor was saying. Uh, the, the challenge that we have, and, and I know that Lisa sent out a, a number of different emails to council last week, is our development ordinances in our code require all new development and subdivisions to have slids, and that's exactly what has occurred here. Secondarily, we have development agreements in place that require slids that are contracts, and that's why the slids exist in Anthem. So the idea that we shouldn't have slids in Anthem is, is folly by our own code and our own contracts. Um, that, that ship has sailed. That ship has sailed, and for any new development that comes on, it's going to be required per the development code to have slids in place. As a matter of fact, we just had a conversation this morning about a development that has been sitting in the wings for the last decade that is looking to move forward, and they actually want to approve a final plat and record that final plat. And one of the things that we showed them was our development code that says they must establish a SLID with the approval of that final plat and bring that, bring that to council before that document is recorded. So that path has already been set, that ship has already sailed. As I said in the last meeting, if council would like town to go out and sponsor actually drives or efforts to try and enlist other folks in, that live in the older parts of the community, Caliente, Florence Gardens, Old Town Florence, to set up new slids, there's a process for that, and we could entertain actually taking those type of efforts if, if that was council's direction. But for Anthem and new development, it's, it's already set, set in place.
I'm not suggesting that we do that. Absolutely not suggesting that we put slids in downtown. I'm just saying that we need to come up with a way that we charge all our citizens fairly with their streetlights. Now, you can put in a SLID, but we don't have to assess money against that. We can pay for these streetlights out of HERF.
Are there any other comments?
So, yeah, I do. So for me, I guess, my thing that I'm having a hard time grasping, and I haven't received the documents yet that I requested, is that we pay, we pay a high dollar to live in Anthem for our HOA fees, and they continue to go up. So every time there's an improvement or whatever, we all kind of feel that impact. But in those HOA fees, our water, all the water that's in, that's being used in any maintenance on sprinklers, or the maintenance on the, the water park pad, or anything like that is included. So I'm just trying to understand when the streetlights not, became not part of maintenance of the HOA and became an additional fee on top of our HOA fees for those residents to have to pay. So that's where I kind of get stuck on it, is as a resident over there, I'm paying three hundred and eighty dollars every quarter, and I was told it included all common areas, maintenance, employment of the staff and everything, and then now I'm being told, oh, yeah, everything but those streetlights, you have to pay now an additional tax to cover the expense of those streetlights. So I understand the SLID, I understand it was set, it's not something we can necessarily change, but if we have a new development that's coming, and they're going to charge HOA fees, and they're going to tell their residents that it's going to cover maintenance of the common areas, well, the streetlights are common areas. The streetlight does not belong to me, it's not on my property, I don't own it, I can't make alterations to it. So then why should it not be considered part of just general maintenance of the community and part of the HOA's responsibility to pay? So that's where I'm stuck on understanding why we're now asking our citizens to pay. And then when I look at the map, I'm kind of like, SLID three, although the Sun City side is the newer development, when I look at it based on where it shows Hunt Highway, those houses on the park side are not the newer homes of SLID three, or of the community. Those are some of the older homes that have been there longer. So I'm just trying to figure out why now we're going to go back to some of our residents that have lived there ten years, twelve years, and say, oh, by the way, you got to pay for those streetlights that light Hunt Highway and the main thing. We don't have very many streetlights on like our actual streets, private streets or main streets, but that's my, my complaint, or my not okay with this, is that it should be part of the HOA fee that's covering this expense, not taxed to the homeowners.
So, presiding officer, ma'am?
Yes, Mr. Billingsley?
Rest of council, I think I've got two very distinct answers to the question. Number one, streetlights are not included as part of the HOA fee, and I, just to clarify, I did the same thing at the last meeting, just to clarify, the town has no involvement in HOA fees, setting them, doesn't collect any portion of them, they have nothing to do with the town, or the CFDs, or these special districts. They are completely separate, and they're between you and your individual homeowners' association for those folks that, that live in an HOA. So the distinction here with the streetlight is it's, it's not in the common area, it's not maintained by the HOA, it's on town right of way, it's on town property, and that's the difference. Those lakes, those play features, those parking lots, those fields, they are owned by the community, they're part of the parcels that the community and the HOA owns. The streetlights are accepted and owned by the town. So that's, that's the first distinction, why it can't be done by the HOA, is it's not their property and they don't own them.
So then that, so then the streetlights that are in the park, on the ball field?
They pay for those.
They pay for those? Okay.
These are in the town right of way, these are actual improvements that we accept through the acceptance program, to accept into maintenance in perpetuity. Secondary, the secondary answer to the question is, this is something that occurs throughout the state of Arizona, and the reason why it occurs throughout the state of Arizona is because the development community needed a way to offset security concerns and lighting in neighborhoods, and, and not have it involved in being turned down, where they wanted additional ancillary lighting for, for safety reasons by towns, because the towns couldn't afford to pay the power bills. So they specifically went in and added a section to the Arizona Revised Statutes that specifically speaks to slids, the requirements of slids, and how they can be used. So a lot of new development around the state of Arizona, and specifically in Maricopa County, slids are the mechanism that are used to be able to pay for that lighting. Once again, that's administration, maintenance, and the power bills for lighting in the, in the public right of way. Very similar the way that CFDs are utilized as a funding mechanism for, for development, so that enhanced infrastructure can occur within the subdivision, but the developer can make that upfront investment and be able to recover it on the back end, although different, similar in, in that it takes some of the burden off of the home builder to provide an amenity that people want, if that makes sense.
Councilwoman Larson?
Thank you. I have just a couple of questions. I do agree with Vice Mayor Anderson's comments about how the HERF funding is used for the non-slid districts, however, slid funds are paid out by the residents. I do take an issue with that, I'm not in any way suggesting that we create a SLID downtown. But I do want to clarify, could you talk to me a little bit more about the HERF funding? I know it's very specific what our purposes are. Is there any possibility, this is where my mind's going, of moving money to make up the difference of the shortage, so that we no longer have to, because we're not charging a rate on those other districts, but instead on the one that we are, in SLID three, that we can make up that difference, or that we could find even a percentage? So I know that it's to accommodate for the extra lighting that we have up in Anthem, that's why there's a SLID, like you just discussed, where we could kind of find a percentage. So say if the town of Florence has four on a street, then we could help with four on the street in Anthem SLID districts, some type of percentage of those bills. Is that even a possibility, where we could find some type of funding in HERF to move that?
Well, I'm, I got, got to think about this a little bit. Let me take a little different approach on this. HERF stands for Highway User Revenue Fund. Those are the gas tax funds and the VLT funds that we all pay, and it's specifically for roads. So why can HERF funds be used for streetlights? Because streetlights are required on the poles adjacent to traffic signals for safety reasons, because streetlights are required on certain types of roadways, meaning functional classifications of roadways, specifically at intersections in urbanized areas so that there's lighting in intersection. So therefore, HERF can be used in those applications. If you've been out and driven downtown or Florence Gardens, you'll find out that there's far less lighting than there is in Anthem. There are lights in Anthem all over the place, and not at intersections, and that's an issue. So my first answer would be, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, and the service being provided isn't the same either. One of the things that was my question when I got back to work today, because I've been gone for a week, is why Lisa's number jumped from forty thousand dollars to eighty thousand dollars in the downtown, because the original email that came out was forty thousand dollars. And the answer was, because of the age of a lot of these wooden power poles and stuff that exists in the downtown, you guys have seen APS come replacing these, these poles. That's the cost that's factored in here. Every year, it's not eighty thousand dollars. Because of the age of the infrastructure in the downtown, a lot of that infrastructure is having to be replaced and repaired, and that's why that dollar amount went from forty thousand to eighty thousand. So it's, the first answer is, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Secondarily, our HERF funds are incredibly important for us as a town to run our public works department and our street department. It's how we pay our employees, that's how we put gas in our vehicles, that's how we buy the maintenance vehicles and pay for the contracts to, to maintain our streets. Any money we take out of HERF, if we want to provide the same level of a service, we're going to have to take out of general fund to replace those funds that are gone from, from a HERF perspective. Clearly, that's a choice that the council can make, but it's, it's a, it would be a decision that would affect the way that we do business and, and utilize those, those funds. Lastly, I already provided the answer earlier, we require these slids, and these slids, when they're set up, are set up for every light pole, with every number, with every head on those lights, and they're specifically set up with this mechanism by state law to pay those bills and to be able to levy. So could we go away from that? I don't know, that's, that's a legal question, but it kind of is contrary to our own codes and the way that we do business and have chosen to do business in Florence. So for, I, I don't have any, any better answers in terms of, could we do this? You know, if we fund four lights there, fund four lights there. The one thing that we haven't touched on is the reason that we haven't levied in these three districts since two thousand twelve, is they were levied at the maximum rate from two thousand five to two thousand twelve, from two thousand six to two thousand twelve, from two thousand seven to two thousand twelve. Well, if you go back and look at five, six, and seven, and, and look at an aerial photo, there was a heck of a lot less houses there in five, six, and seven. So those initial owners have been augmenting everybody else since two thousand twelve. They paid the lion's share of all these fees that everybody else that's new since five, six, and seven didn't pay. So those, those original property owners paid upfront for a lot of those costs, and it's, it's catching up with, with three. Why is it catching up with three? My personal opinion is because those are the older houses, and there have been more houses, there have been more lights in place during that period, and there's received, there's been a heck of a lot more growth in, in slids one and two over that time period in terms of sales of new houses than there has been in, in three, because those areas in three were already built out before that time, if that makes sense. So there's more costs over a longer period of time.
As you know, Brent, I like to push the boundary a little bit, so that's, that's, sorry.
Question?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Brent? Yes, can we, do we have the authority to revoke a SLID?
I think that's a, that's a cliff-sized question. He wants to know if we have the ability to revoke the slids, just get rid of them.
Well, you know, we do have development agreements in the Merrill Ranch area that address slids. Our town code currently requires slids for these districts, so quite frankly, I can't tell you off the top of my head, if we're allowed to revoke an existing SLID, we'd have to get back to you on that, but there would be other implications affecting our current long-term agreements and our obligations under the town code.
Ray just provided me with some information that assists in answering the Vice Mayor's question. Under Arizona Revised Statutes forty-eight four, forty-eight six sixteen, there is the ability to revoke a SLID as long as the municipality is willing to assume the total cost of the lighting and its maintenance in perpetuity. But that does not go to answering the question regarding our contractual relationships with the landowners out there, with the homeowners themselves, because you sign off on being a SLID when you become a homeowner, as well as our own development code and what's required in it. So can't, can't answer those questions, but apparently the statute does allow dissolution of a district.
Can I finish?
Thank you.
I just sort of got frustrated, I apologize. So my question, I don't feel I got it answered. So would we, I understand that they are not apples-to-apples. I feel that that's a fairly easy analysis that you could do to find out which things would be covered under HERF, whether they meet that criteria or not. Is there a way to move the money from a HERF account to pay for the deficits? Because I have an issue with, like you said, with those specific homeowners that have been paying for all those years, and they carry the cost for other homeowners. I don't like that, not, I don't like that at all. And I also don't like the fact that those homeowners that are going to be charged at this new rate are going to be charged while everybody else is in charge, and it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. I want it to be fair, and I think that a simple analysis of what lights are required that would be funded by HERF could be done, and then that amount could be transferred, in my opinion. Is that legal? Could we move HERF funds to one of the slids to cover the deficit?
Well, we all know it's not budgeted to do that. We just approved our budget, and it's very clear and very specifically outlines where our HERF money's being spent, that we'd have to do a budget, a budget amendment to, to move those, those HERF funds. I don't, I don't know if that's legal or not, and contractually, what we would need to do there. My main question is for Ray. I'm under the impression that we're against the gun here in terms of making the decision so that the county can do their taxing, and I think we're up against it. So the idea of coming back next month and having that conversation, that's going to put us in the rearms in terms of our ability to, to send out the tax bills, which is going to put us adverse with the county.
If I could just make a comment, I, I think we are up against a deadline here for our, our taxing authority, and what we're talking about obviously is a very complex question, whether or not we have any alternatives for what we may or may not be able to do legally, either as related to development agreements and to the statute. I would suggest that we move ahead with, with the proposed ordinance, at least for this point in time, and then do some research and determine what our alternatives might be going forward. But I, I don't think we have an option at this point to not either approve or disapprove this, and if we disapprove this, we're faced with a twenty-two thousand dollar electrical bill for the fiscal year upcoming, which, as Brent mentioned, we do not have budgeted.
Yeah, I do want to add that, Mayor, that I actually have three days from today to submit the paperwork to the county.
Can I ask why we keep doing this? I feel I'm getting very frustrated with these types of answers, when, whether we're talking about other things that we've done in the past couple of months, or whether we're talking in this type of situation. When there's a deadline, we know that deadline, we know when this is coming. How come we're waiting until days or weeks, until it, decision has to be made to go back to the public, to come back to us? It's getting very frustrating, so.
I think I've got an answer to that question. Tax rates are set the same time by law every year, and it all relates to our budget, our budget approvals, and, and that process, they're, they're all interlinked. The budget council, the calendar went out in December, there was an update, I want to say in February, I think there was another update in, in April. We had a very typical budget process, everything was agendized, many meetings, many discussions. We all knew the summation of that was approval of a budget and setting of tax rates. We do it the same time every single year, the same time every other city does it. And those dates in terms of the public hearings, et cetera, those were all fully disclosed and part of the calendar. There's nothing that's being done at the last second, it's, it's all being done by the proper protocols, just like every other community in Arizona, there's nothing hidden here.
I was on the budget committee, so I know we talked about the general, the general budget for the most part, we didn't talk specifically about slids, or even the possibility of dissolving slids, or paying for a deficit, or the fact that they would have to be an increase, we didn't talk about those things.
We didn't know it at that time.
That's what I'm saying, that's exactly my point, is how come we aren't being made aware of those things until we get to this, three days, until we have to make a decision? we get to this three days, until we have to make a decision? And now we can't even go back to see if we have legal authority to do another option? We're presented with, this is the option, we need to move forward, and this is what it has to be. That's negating all of our vote. Then why are we voting? Because if we can't find another solution, then why are we even voting on it? If it's already, the decision's already made. That's my point.
The council, going back as far as Ray said, to 2005, made a decision on using slids. We have contracts, development agreements, as well as our own codes that speak to this solution. And it was a solution that was chosen. So we have gone forward utilizing the CFDs, the slids, et cetera, annually during that period, every year. Slids are a little bit different story, because year to year, we analyze what our ability is and what those costs are. Thus far, we've been lucky. In the three and a half years I've been here, we haven't had to levy on any of the slids because of the sizable amounts that were levied between 2005 and 2012. This is the first time. We just became aware, what, a month ago, once the valuations were done, et cetera, what that deficit was going to be. And we put that together, we took that to council, and we had a conversation at the last meeting, which was our first public hearing. This is our second public hearing and adoption, per the calendar. So it's not like staff's been withholding information or not providing ample opportunity for discussion. The discussion that's required under state law, we've followed.
You're right, you brought it up, the last meeting.
Are you saying, question, Brent? Are you saying that out of a $40 million budget, we don't have a $20,000 pad somewhere that we can pay for this kid, for these lights?
No, clearly, council can make a decision to amend that budget and to put their funds where they would like. That's not the challenge. The challenge here is, we chose to utilize slids as a town and have contracts and ordinances to that effect. And that's the way staff has proceeded.
What we're telling you now is that we may want to change that. And we're looking to you to come up with a way that we can do that.
Brent, I would ask that, my observation, I mean, the slids are the slids, they're there. I don't think we're going to get rid of them anytime soon, and we definitely don't want to add a slid to the people that live in historic Florence. We're talking about, nobody, the people that first bought in this area paid all these, paid upfront to cover everyone else. But now we're going to go back to those same people and say, oh, guess what? All these new people have depleted the fund, so now we need to add you, we need you to add more to the pot. Why are we not asking the newer residents to add to the pot? And that's just, I'm like, well, it's, to me, it's not fair to go to the person who's lived there since 2005 and say, we charged you at the max, and we built up this pot, and now that pot's empty because of all this new build. Am I understanding that the new build hasn't covered their part yet, this part has, so now we're going to ask you to pay in some more money? And at some point, we'll come to these people and ask them to pay. I'm just thinking, why are we not asking them to pay and not asking these people to pay? Because I think they've already paid their fair amount.
That's a very logical question. That's the way that taxing works. Some of us that have owned a house in Pinal County for 20 years have been paying for CAC for 20 years. And if you just moved here and you go to CAC, one could say, you haven't paid your fair share to be able to get the benefits of using CAC. It's the cost of doing business. That's the way taxation works. Now, in this case, there's taxation with representation, and we're providing that here tonight in this forum, so that's a positive thing. The simple answer to the question is, we, and I'm using this in a very general term, in a perfect world, the town and the slid would have taxed at a rate that would cover that individual cost for electrical maintenance and administration of those lights from year to year, kind of like our property taxes do from year to year. And you've seen the rates on our property taxes, to where they're fairly and equitably shared amongst all. The challenge was, the town of Florence had never done a slid before. Town of Florence didn't necessarily know what a slid was. And when the slids were formed, a rate was set. And at that time, that maximum rate was assumed to be the rate that it would cost for the power bills and the maintenance and the administration at that time, which was $1.20. So the town, the council at that time, decided to tax at that set rate, $1.20. And what it found out after several years is that they were collecting too much. So the council at that time decided, and Bill was on the council in those years, he may be able to add some clarity to it, council decided to stop charging and just spend down those amounts. They had the ability to, instead of completely getting rid of the tax rate, to just tax at a much lower rate than what they had originally taxed. They chose to stop until which time a balance could be seen. And we've talked about this every year that I've been here, and thus far, we've been lucky until this year, that we didn't have to go out and set a rate. Let's hope that the past is the past, and going forward, in all of these districts, they are all taxed at a rate to cover the expenses on an annual basis, so there isn't a porpoising of revenue, which is what occurred in the early years. And I don't know why that rate was chosen and we taxed at that rate, but that's just what happened.
Well, I think from my three years on the budget committee, I heard every year that there's a high likelihood that all three of the slids will eventually have to have a tax rate, because those balances have been depleted over the years. And it just so happened that slid three was depleted before slid one and two. And unfortunately, it's very likely that one and two will have to have a rate set in upcoming years. I'm not sure how soon.
We believe next year. But the key is, and this is a great segue to my answer to Councilmember Cortez, is in the future, we will set a rate year by year based on known expenses, known number of lights, and we'll have much better data so that the folks that are paying into the slid are only paying for the expenses that are going to be accrued by the slid instead of this nest egg. I don't know if slids are included in the state law regarding the CFDs, but as we've shared with you before, three years ago, the legislature created some rules that said we couldn't overtax to build, how do you want to say, these rainy day funds in special districts. We could only cover our actual cost plus 10%. But whether that's included in that state law or not, I'm here sitting before you to say, that makes a great deal of sense in terms of our board policy and what we should be doing as a town, to look at actuals plus 10% to make sure that everything's fair for everybody and it's sustainable going forward.
If I'm not mistaken, it's highly likely, too, that in the new areas that are being built out now, there would be additional slids created that all new property owners would be subject to.
Yes, ma'am. There are two that are fixing to come before you in the very near term. And those were discussed multiple times last year when we were negotiating the land use clarification agreements with both Pulte and Southwest Value Partners. The two that are coming forward in the very near future, one is called Slid Four, the other is called Slid Five. Slid Five will likely become, come before you sooner, because it is a parcel that hasn't been developed and doesn't have any lots being sold and houses being sold. So therefore, in terms of collecting signatures and valuation, it's all Pulte. So it'll be simply submitting an application, which they have, going through the public process, and initiating that slid per our development agreements, per our development code, per state law. Slid Four is a little bit more complicated, and you'll probably remember conversations regarding that when we were doing the land use clarification agreements. Slid Four, instead of coming forward during the plat process to set up the slid, Pulte let it slip through the cracks. And so they didn't realize that they hadn't set up the slid until more than half of the lots had been sold in that individual area. So they've been out for several months now, having public meetings, collecting signatures with respect to that application. But the clerk's already done her review. I believe that slid will be coming, oh, Cliff says he has an update.
The update on that is that Pulte has been working, I think, since October on that and gathering signatures. The statutory requirement is for over 50% of the valuation signature from owners to petition for the formation of the district. In addition, 51, over 50% of the number, so it's of value and numbers. And it looks like Pulte has both to bring those petitions forward to the council. But before it comes to the council, there has to be notification in the paper, and then their public hearing like this for that particular district.
Councilman Hawkins, did you have a comment? Any other comments?
I just wanted to say that, I know, I mean, I feel like I still haven't gotten my question answered about the HERF possible moving of funds. If we could do some type of analysis to find a percentage of the total lights, that is something that's going to be important to me, so expect me to answer, ask it again. I'm going, I think I've asked this every year since I've been on council. Every time this light has come up, I continue to push for some type of equality there. I feel that it is unfair that the HERF funds are used to pay for the non-slid areas in total, and yet slid areas is all put on the residents individually. I do not think that's okay. So I'll continue to push that, and I continue to want that answer. So whether you can get the answer tonight or not, expect to have me ask it again. Just letting you know.
Okay, moving forward, I would need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 677-19.
I can second that. We need a roll call.
Councilmember Hughes.
Aye.
Councilmember Cortez.
Aye.
Councilmember Larson.
Nay.
Councilmember Wall.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Nay.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion carries. Moving to new business, 13A, Resolution 1711-19, discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving a town core incentive district plan request for Pinal County APN 200-44-0690 and APN 200-44-0700, case PZID-19-01. Mr. Harmer.
Thank you, presiding Councilmember Wall, Vice Mayor Anderson, rest of the council members. First of all, I would just quickly apologize for the disinformation on the opportunity zone. We most definitely will get clarification to the HDAC as soon as possible. This particular case is kind of unique. We have not had many core infill incentive district requests since I've been here. This is actually only the second one we've processed. However, I see more of them coming. Vice Mayor Anderson has seen this presentation. I noticed it was not included in your packet, so we'll go through it for you and for the council, and for the audience. Basically, as it says in the agenda item, it's for two properties, 155 West 11th and 110 North Willow Street. They are adjacent properties. The 110 Willow is a historic property that has been marketing for sale for some time. The 155 11th is a single-family home fronting on 11th Street. If you notice by this aerial, the property line cuts right through the existing, what was a manor house, which is now a fourplex on that site, which is making it rather difficult to be able to sell that property, because not having clear title to it. So this request is to allow for the adjustment in this property line to a position in cooperation with 155 11th, so that both proper, or both structures, the 110 and the 155, are on their own individual properties. Basically, in order to accomplish that, it'll take a reduction of lot width on, this should be 155 11th Street, from 75 to approximately 58 feet, plus a reduction in order to make this a compliant property, a reduction of the front yard setback from 20 feet to 5 feet. That's an existing condition, so this would recognize that. And then reduce the required side yard setback on the 110 Willow from 12 feet to 6 feet. What that is, the, that property line would actually sit on the existing fence line that currently separates the, presumably two properties, but the backyard fence for the 155. So that's where the new property line would sit. This is a clip-up of the survey as to what the request would be. This would be the new property line. The dotted through here is the existing property line. So this, both property owners are in accord on this, and it's a joint application. The, the core infill incentive plan was, that we are using, is, was duly adopted based on the layout and requirements of state statute. It helps seek remedies for situations such as this, where undeveloped lots or strange configurations or things of that nature. And the request does support the 2020 general plan housing element objectives to properly promote maintenance of private and public properties, and encourage redevelopment and substantial revitalization of existing residential areas. Modifications are noted as being appropriate and would render both properties legal and marketable. Only the one property, 110 Willow, is currently on the market, but this would open up the possibility for the 155 West 11th Street also. Planning Commission did something quite interesting in their recommendation to the council. They added a condition that that application not move forward to the council until that property, the 110, was brought into conformance for property maintenance. There was a preponderance of weeds and trash on the property, the little picket fence in the front was falling over, all those things. We did notify the property owner. Our code compliance officer has inspected the property and now meets the standards as established in the town code. So that's why it has been brought forth tonight. Planning Commission recommends to the mayor and council a favorable recommendation, and subject to any conditions that you might feel are necessary.
Does council have any questions?
Nope.
Councilwoman Hughes?
I have a comment that I would like to commend the planning and zoning for bringing that forward. I think that was forward-thinking of them.
Councilwoman Cortez?
My question is, how did the owner of the two-story gain title? Because that was there when they bought it. It was like this when they bought it. And nobody, nobody realized that the property lines were like that?
Well, I'm not sure how long ago that happened.
About eight years ago.
Yeah. Apparently, nobody noticed it, or nobody questioned it. Title company maybe didn't do their job adequately.
Did all one property at one time? I'm sorry, Mr. Hawkins, do you have something you'd like to interject?
Well, the, the town staff, they don't know how it was bought or sold. You know, that's between the person purchasing the property and their financing entity. Mr. Harmer wouldn't have any idea why, how it did that. And it's been that way all over old Florence. This isn't the first time we.
Right, there'll be more.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Bill, I'm just asking questions. I don't know if you don't have time for them, or if they're bothering you, but I feel like I have the right to ask my questions.
Well, you do, but.
Please proceed with your.
He doesn't have the answer for that.
All I can.
Cortez, go ahead.
All I can tell you is, at one time, there were multiple lots in through here. You can see the configuration behind the alley to the west. That would have been the historic basic configuration of lots in and around downtown. When this all occurred, I have found nothing in the records that says when it occurred, how it got sold eight years ago. I can't answer to that. You know, that's not something that comes through us. The sale of property doesn't come through the town. You know, it just happened sometime in the past, nobody caught it, you know, I can't explain it.
Mr. Harmer, I think that one of the property owners may have an answer to that question.
I was trying not to blame it on her.
Trust me, nobody's blaming it on her. I'm just trying to figure out how we even ended up here, on this property or any property, how we ended up here. Like, how do you not, you know, somebody screwed up on the survey or something? And I would think that the property owners would be able to go back to the title company and ask, how did I get clear title on a property that clearly did not have clear title? and ask, how did I get clear title on a property that clearly did not have clear title? So, I'm just asking some clarification questions.
Councilmembers, I'm Cindy Sills. I'm the broker-owner of Belvestre Estate, and I represent the owner of 155 Willow. Years and years and years ago, these properties were one property, and they were owned by the White family. Eventually, they were bought by somebody else, and they were foreclosed. So, when they were both foreclosed by different lenders, they became two different properties. And so, that's where, that's where the issue occurred. When somebody buys a property, they choose sometimes not to do a survey. So, until a survey is done, it doesn't come up. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Councilwoman Cortez?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I might point out that we're going to get more infill incentive-type requests, maybe not quite this radical, but I'm finding little situations all over Old Town as, you know, we get questions on individual properties, there are people looking to purchase, sell. Some of them are just curious as to their property and what they can do with it. We look it up, and we're finding circumstances like this scattered all over town.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, I could use a motion.
Make a motion that we pass Resolution Number 1711-19.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a manager's report.
All right, I have, I have three things tonight. One, hopefully, everybody was able to see our new rehab truck, as well as our new Range trailer. Those are both great success stories and a credit to both chiefs. They came to me with some ideas last year about some well-needed resources that we couldn't afford in the budget, and came up with solutions that we could afford in the budget. The first, if you saw the big red truck outside, that was a police vehicle. That was an evidence vehicle, if I recall, chief, and it wasn't really working for that need, so the chiefs got together and came up with a plan to repurpose that vehicle. And I think the CERT team, well, I know the CERT team really appreciates it, because I was meeting with some of them before the meeting. So, excellent work. The other one is the Range trailer. So, the chief came to me, I don't know, nine months ago, chief, and said, hey, there's some folks that have a trailer that they, that they want to sell that's sitting up here on the side of the road in Florence Gardens, and it's very inexpensive, and you know that we wanted to get funded for this. What do you, what do you think about investing in this trailer and then working with, with the correctional industries over here to outfit it the way that we want? And we found out a way to do it in the budget. It was a very inexpensive project as compared to the alternatives we're looking at, and I know the police department's very excited and proud of it. So, thank you for showing those tonight. Next, I'm happy to report to council that our own Mr. Benjamin Bitter, to my left, has recently been appointed as Chair of the Digital Strategies Advisory Board for the International City and County Managers Association. So, the DSAB influences members and prospective members with ICMA through digital platforms such as icma.org, social media, and other things. The board helps to identify knowledge-sharing needs of local government professionals and provide feedback on the current member experiences, as well as ideas and future applications. Advisory Board members serve ICMA and the digital community by making active contributions in their areas of expertise and encouraging colleagues to do the same. So, congratulations, Ben, for that appointment. And lastly, I just got this this morning, and I wanted to make the announcement tonight, but in, according to Arizona Big Media, Florence rated this last year as one of the five best places to retire in Arizona, and made the top 10 list, actually as number three. And I'll read that section. "If small towns and low rents are your thing, Florence is an excellent place to hang your hat. Located in Pinell County, Florence is one of the oldest towns in the state. It has more than 25 buildings on the National Register of Historic Places. Adding to its charm, the quaint small town is surrounded by desert mountains and beautiful scenery. The median rent price is around $780 a month, and whether you live in a historic building or an upscale community, you'll enjoy a large, comfortable home and great weather." So, congratulations to Florence for number three on five best places to retire in Arizona. That's all I have.
That's amazing. Last call to the public. Are there any members in the public who would like to speak at this time? Closing call to the public. Call to the council. Councilwoman Larson.
That was great news, that we're number three. I am very proud of Florence for that. I also wanted to say thank you, Brent, for thinking out of the box and being, allowing the police and fire department to outfit those vehicles with their new CERT team, I guess, utility vehicles, whatever we want to call them. That, I like that type of thinking. I like taking a problem that you, doesn't seem really feasible, and finding a solution. So, I appreciate that. Otherwise, I really don't have anything tonight.
Councilwoman Cortez?
I just wanted to congratulate you on your appointment, Ben. And I think Chris Solis did a great job last week, so I did want to say that again, that I attended his meeting, his public meeting, and he, it was very informative, and it really helped me understand it more. So, I did appreciate that. And just, let's have a good week.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hughes?
I'd like to thank Pinell Partner, the Pinell County Board of Supervisors for approving last Wednesday the bulk of their county's share of the CDBG funding that's going to be awarded in the amount of $989,036 to upgrade water infrastructure in downtown Florence. That is extremely generous, and I love the way that the county is coming alongside us. We do have an aging infrastructure, and it's well-needed. And one of the other things that I wanted to report from, from that article was that the report was an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice report, and that they had said that they had identified five major needs. The first one was renovation and repair, the assistance for low-income elderly residents and residents with disabilities. Number two was infrastructure improvements, water and wastewater. Three was affordable housing. Four was housing services to the homeless. And the fifth was job training and employment support. Well done, county.
Councilman Hawkins?
I have nothing.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes, first, I'd like to thank, thank you for being vice mayor tonight. Councilmember Wall, you've done an excellent job. You've done a whole lot better job than what I could have done tonight. With all my other problems, I can hardly talk right now. But thank you so much for setting in for me. And I want to thank all the notes and emails and cards that I've received this week. I'm on my boat to recovery. I think I'll be back to my aggravating self next week, so I want to thank everybody for all their support. Thank you.
Thank you. Get well soon. Last but not least, thank you guys for putting up with me. This is the first time I've had to do this, and obviously, I made a few stumbles, but I appreciate your support. And I also would like to wish a happy birthday to Ms. Jennifer Evans, who I heard is celebrating today. Hopefully, we didn't spoil the party tonight. So, with that said, I need a motion to.
Judy's birthday was yesterday.
Oh, well, happy belated birthday, Councilwoman Hughes. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
What are you saying?
I think we have multiple seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night, everyone.